Say the pledge.
The United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need anybody with a speech? Do we have any reports on board?
Yeah, you did have a fact search.
I told you that.
Not sure whether. And we. So there's another pocket that we don't know where. I think we're still pending.
Yeah, I think we reviewed four potential settlements that were proposed by the town. One was accepted, one and two, we needed more information, and one we were counter offering. So they're all still pending at this point, or at least we haven't heard from the one we accepted, but they're still pending.
That's it. Anyone else? All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Pennell.
Okay, great. We have three items under the superintendent's report tonight. The first item, I'm pleased to welcome our new principal at Windermere Boulevard Elementary, Mrs. Pasquale, and Nicole Holler, our Mrs. Koller, our assistant principal, and it looks like some special guests to give us an update on the good things happening at Windermere Elementary School.
Appreciate the support.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Pennell shared, I'm Marcy Pasquale, the principal at Windermere.
Good evening, everyone. Nicole Holler, assistant principal at Windermere.
So our voices normally don't sound like this, but we work in the elementary building, so, you know, it comes with the territory, but we're so excited to be here with you this evening for our very first board update as a new leadership team at Windermere. And to begin the presentation, I'd like to share with you a story that I shared with teachers on opening day. And it's the story of "The Coffee Bean" by John Gordon. Is anyone familiar with "The Coffee Bean"?
Great.
So some are, right? So "The Coffee Bean" is essentially a story about a carrot, an egg, a coffee bean, and a pot of boiling water. And the water is a metaphor for our environment. So as we know, change brings about stress and challenges, and a new leadership team is changed, right? So when we think about the boiling hot pot of water being our environment, and in the story "The Coffee Bean," there's a carrot. Carrot goes into the pot of hot water. What happens to the carrot?
It gets soft.
Soft. It weakens, right? It gets soft. Exactly. Good. So that. The next item. This is interactive. The next item to go into the pot is the carrot, or excuse me, the egg. What happens to the egg?
It gets hardened.
It gets hardened, right? It gets hardened. Coffee bean goes into the pot. What happens to the coffee bean?
Flavors the water.
Flavors the water, transforms the water, and the water becomes coffee, right? So it's really this idea of the environment is the water. The environment can harden us like the egg, can soften us like the carrot, or we can be transformative. And that's really what we challenged our teachers and each other with entering this school year as a new leadership team. So how can we embrace that mindset? And we are definitely going to, and we have experienced times where we become the carrot. We're softened, we're hardened, we're the egg. But let's lean on each other and let's commit to embracing the idea of this coffee bean mindset. And with that in mind, our kind of theme tonight, and what we're going to walk you through, is how we're going about doing that. How are we brewing success at Windermere? Building upon a really strong foundation that already existed within the building. We have high-quality educators. I know that firsthand. So being able to work with such a talented group of educators, how can we take the strong foundation and continue to elevate and enhance what we're already doing? So as everyone received a copy of "The Coffee Bean," they also had a souvenir as a reminder to embrace the coffee bean mindset. And we've revisited this idea during faculty meetings and throughout the year. So it's just something that kind of anchors our thinking, anchors our work, and puts us in the right mindset to tackle change and to be introduced to new programming, new initiatives, things that are going to contribute positively to our building. So rewinding back to the summer of 2024, that's when I first started, and my first week was the administrative retreat. So that was an amazing experience put on by the curriculum office, coupled with Mr. Pennell's office, making sure that myself, as a new leader, I walked away fully aware of what our district goals were, where we've been, where we currently are, where we're going, and really had a good idea of, you know, what I was charged to do as a building leader at Windermere. I also appreciated that retreat because it allowed me to connect with my colleagues, fellow members of the admin cabinet, which, again, getting to know the cabinet, and what I've now come to learn is they have gotten a tremendous support, tremendous guidance, you know, they provided us with guidance and much-needed direction when we were looking for input and guidance. So to the members that are here, thank you. You have gotten a tremendous support, and that retreat really launched the work that we then started to do. One-on-one teacher meetings occurred during the summer as well, and it was an optional opportunity for teachers to meet with me, one-on-one, very casual conversation. Had some questions that they were made aware of ahead of time, such as describe Windermere, give me three words to describe Windermere. What needs to be protected at Windermere? What are the great successes at Windermere? What are some challenges and what supports do you need? So the meetings were very informative, and I was able to gather a lot of information that helped frame and helped guide in the work that we were doing going into the school year. Responsive classroom leadership team, a talented group of educators working on rebooting and being dedicated to kind of resetting on the fundamentals and the philosophy around responsive classroom. We've done a responsive classroom building for several, several years, but we needed to get back to good on some of the foundational aspects of responsive classroom, and what would that look like? What would that sound like? So the team and I and Nicole worked very closely together on developing that and then seeing it through this year. And we're going to visit that a little bit later in the presentation, so you'll hear more about that. And then finally, the strategic planning committee, which directly connects to the administrative retreat, thinking about teaching, learning, student life, and first pride. What does that look like at the district level, and how does that show up at the building? So going from a macro level to a micro level, what does that look like? What does that feel like at Windermere? And for me, kind of thinking about this process, it's very much interwoven. So all of the new initiatives, the new programs that you're going to hear about today are really with the idea of these three kind of pillars braided together because they're very much interwoven through all the things that we are doing and continue to do in the building. And Nicole's going to talk a little bit more about the committee.
So this past summer, we had a really dedicated group of individuals from Windermere that came together to really focus our work on our strategic plan at the building level. Our team comprised of faculty, staff, PPS members. We had a parent representative, and we all worked collaboratively to align our goals with the district's vision in the strategic plan. So stepping away from the school setting, as you can see, we had the pleasure of going to an off-site where we were able to reflect on our progress and plan for the future. And a big thank you to our curriculum office for their support in helping us organize this really successful event. The time and space was, it really gave us time to have some meaningful discussions that were invaluable and really helped us plan and kick off the school year. So we're excited to show you how all of our work came to life this year. Continuing with our, oops, continuing with our strategic planning committee, we engage in a lot of meaningful reflection to assess where we've been in the past, where we are now at that current point of that summer with a new leadership team starting, and then where we wanted to go and to really kind of align our arrows. And so through a lot of structured brainstorming and open-ended discussions, we explored the three key focus areas, so teaching and learning, student life, and first pride. And those conversations helped us to refine our goals, and not just for this year, but also for the coming years up to 2026. So by identifying all the strengths and areas for growth, we launched the school year with some new systems that help strengthen our school community and help to align with our long-term vision. And so we're really excited to share how these goals are already to shape at Windermere.
Okay. Getting to the exciting stuff. So although that was all exciting, now we're getting ready to launch the school year. So opening day, it's critical. It's a big deal. So going into opening day, we wanted to make sure that our staff felt connected. We wanted to realign our instructional focus and our goals as a building. And we wanted to be able to celebrate each other. So part of opening day was to make sure that the staff connected with each other, to acknowledge years of service, which the staff absolutely loved, and they're proud of that. We have members that have served for decades. So it's something that they really enjoyed, and we spent some time celebrating and acknowledging one another. We had an opportunity to reset on responsive classroom, realign our instructional focus, and have that continuity across grades, that language that should be consistent across grades. What would that look like? Let's remind ourselves, and then introduce our new teachers to what that language looks like, what that language sounds like. So it was a really great opportunity to get together, set the tone for the year, identify our instructional focus, and work together as a collective group to embrace that mindset and make sure that we are moving forward all together in the same direction, rowing in the same direction. So part of opening day, we had the opportunity to launch new systems and supports. And these systems, when I mentioned those meetings over the summer, a lot of the needs that were identified, these were in response to those needs. So how can we help support and streamline processes? Better communication, feedback, support in terms of academic behavior, all of that. So these three systems were introduced. The first one is ODR, Office Disciplinary Referral. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We have a Request for Assistance process, which is called an RFA, live afternoons. And then check-in and check-out, which is a tier-two research, evidence-based intervention for kids in need of tier-two behavioral support. So I'll talk a bit about the ODR, and Nicole will share a bit about how we utilize the data. So in this center, you'll see a behavior flow chart. So that's familiar to teachers. That's something that wasn't new this year. So we reset on that behavior flow chart and this idea of minor infractions and major infractions, and defining those. And again, that's not new. That was something that was familiar. So the new piece was this idea of streamlining communication with an electronic Office Disciplinary Referral. So you have a minor, and then you have a major. And it's the teachers are telling them what constitutes a minor, what constitutes a major. So it's a lot electronic. That form gets submitted. It goes to admin and PPS. That would be in charge of responding if needed. And it also allows for a feedback loop. So teachers were able to get some, you know, some timely feedback to know how did this close? What additional, you know, support, or what additional things do I need to put in place to continue to support this particular kid in the classroom? So it really helped to improve communication and that feedback and that response. And it's been very well received, and we utilize the data, and we have eyes on the data on a daily basis as they come in. But we look at it with the PPS team. Every day in my day, we have a dedicated time to analyze the data, again, looking at it at the macro level, the micro level, and really with the idea of making decisions in the best interest of our students. What is needed? What would we need to put in place? And Nicole's going to talk a little bit about how we do that.
So as Marcy mentioned, data has been a really critical piece in, you know, helping us shape our support systems, both at the tier-one level and at the individual student, you know, individual student level in terms of providing interventions. And so it's helped us identify professional development needs also by looking at our data. So like she mentioned, each week, our PPS team, we come together and we look at our data on a weekly basis. But then we also take a look at the data and we put it into what we're calling a monthly ODR dashboard. And so we're taking a look at all the trends. You know, is there a specific location that some of these behaviors are happening? Is it a specific time of day? So really honing in and trying to, you know, pinpoint where additional support is needed. We're looking at monthly data trends just to see, you know, uptick in behaviors. And then also we're looking at individual student trends. And the individual student trends then helps us to determine, you know, if a particular student needs additional support, figuring out what interventions we can use to support that individual student. So this interactive approach really helps us to make some real-time decision-making, so we can look at, you know, the overall numbers, but really hone in on individual kids too. So through this analysis process, we've been able to identify students who need more targeted intervention, which brings us to our next system, which is Request for Assistance.
So the Request for Assistance really answers the question that a teacher might have, how do I get support? Like, where do I go? And that was identified as another area of need. So this Request for Assistance, again, another electronic submission, a simple form. It can be for academic and behavioral, or both. And it is submitted. We schedule a meeting within a week's time. We brainstorm. It's really a problem-solving meeting where we look at the data, to root it in the data. So let's talk about the data. Let's talk about what are some tier-one things that you put in place, whether it's academic or behavioral. And then we start making some, we put some actionable steps into an action plan. Trying some things out. Let's consider all of these different ways that we can potentially identify or alleviate this deficit that we've identified. And then let's give it six to eight weeks. Come back, re-meet, let's see how we're doing, and make adjustments as needed. So to date, we've had over 65 Request for Assistance meetings, and the feedback has been extremely positive. There's a quote from a teacher, I won't read it directly, but essentially she responded to emails in response to an RFA meeting and said that it was super productive, very collaborative. She felt supported. She left with great ideas to try, and she was looking forward to the follow-up to see if what we put in place was having its intended impact. If not, we were ready to make adjustments. So we are having quite a few meetings, but they are super productive, very beneficial, and something that we will continue to do moving forward.
One of the outcomes of the RFA meeting has been our check-in, check-out, or CICO. So check-in, check-out process is a tier-two intervention, and that's to provide a student with some increased positive adult interaction and routine feedback from that particular adult. So it's specifically targeted for students who need a bit more support. Each student enrolled in check-in, check-out has a daily progress report or a DPR. So what you see over here on the left side are a couple examples of a DPR. It's a daily progress report. We've got stars and our tigers. And basically, it's aligned with our tiger stripes or our school rules. So be kind, respectful, be safe, be your best. So the DPRs are tailored to really hone in on what each student, you know, what the, you know, behavior that we're trying to target. And then out of that DPR, we then track all of that data through an individualized graph that we see here. So over on the right, we've got a student graph where the goal line is the green line. And you can see that when a student is, you know, needing or exceeding that goal line, we then increase the goal to really push that student. And the whole idea behind check-in, check-out is to eventually fade this so that they can then return to a tier-one intervention. So we currently have 12 students enrolled in check-in, check-out, and we also have 31, 32 trained, 32 trained facilitators, adults outside the classroom who check in and check out with our students, both at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. So one of the most incredible aspects of Windermere is just the fact that we have so many dedicated staff members who are willing to participate as a facilitator in check-in, check-out. So this commitment not only strengthens the effectiveness of check-in, check-out, but also contributes to our positive supportive school culture.
Okay, so all of these systems that we just shared with you, none of this would be possible without the support and people in place to help carry these things out. And that's our wonderful PPS team here. So they are, they play an integral role in making sure that, you know, the ODR data, we're looking at that as a collective group. Request for Assistance meetings. Kristin Panzerman is scheduling those as they come in. And the check-in, check-out with the DPR, we're looking at that. We're making decisions on a weekly basis. So this is the team right here that is heavily involved in it. So it's great that they're here because they are critical in those processes. So also contributing to a positive school culture. In addition to systems and supports, we wanted to make sure that we had some really targeted programs and initiatives for students. How can we make sure that students feel connected and feel like Windermere is their school? So this year, we had three programs that we'd like to share with you. The first one is called "All Are Welcome," a school life theme that is something that we will share with you in just a moment, but it's really something that unifies our building under this, with this book and with this message, "All Are Welcome." There's a program called Tiger Tuesday and then Common Language. So these programs contribute to this idea of having a unified school culture where kids feel connected, feel seen, feel valued, feel a part of our building. And as we know, Windermere is diverse, right? That is our strength. It is woven into the fabric of who we are as a building. And it is truly a special place to be. And the data up here depicts that. So we have a very diverse school population. Our students come from all different backgrounds, all different groups, and we want to celebrate that. We have a wonderful event in the fall hosted by E&amp;O Department, the multicultural fair. It's a beautiful event. And we want to extend it. What else can we do throughout the year to make sure that we are celebrating who we are as a school community? And it's through this theme of "All Are Welcome." So we launched the year with a kickoff assembly outside, and Wendy was present. We had the entire building together, and we were able to share this idea of "All Are Welcome," kind of build up suspense. They couldn't wait to find out what they were going to be getting, and it was the book, "All Are Welcome." So all the teachers came up. They received their book. We celebrated. Teachers read it in their classroom, and we're continuing to embed this theme throughout the school year. So our cafeteria walls are adorned with paper dolls representing every single student in our building. We have a display case right across from the main office showcasing all of our faculty and staff. And every day on morning announcements, we have students come down and share what we call Windermere Words of Wisdom. So they come down, they share their words of wisdom, and then they always end with this phrase.
WBS is our community. Everyone is welcoming you. Let's make it a Tiger Wednesday.
So that's just something that is on morning announcements every single day. It's a wonderful way to tie it all together and, you know, reestablish that commitment and embrace that idea that we are all here together and we are all welcome and valued and seen in our building.
So fostering a positive and supportive school culture is really key to helping our students thrive. And so at Windermere, we wanted to really celebrate our students who were consistently demonstrating our school rules or tiger stripes, being kind, respectful, safe, and being their best. And so we introduced Tiger Tuesday this year. So Tiger Tuesday is our positive referral system. It's an electronic referral system where teachers, staff members, and any adult in the building can nominate a student for showing their stripes. And so they fill out the Google form, the electronic form, and each Tuesday, we recognize all of the students who received a referral through this form. And then the students get to wear a lanyard to secure out the rest of the week to show off that they earned a Tiger Tuesday award. And then you're also given a certificate to bring home and showcase them under first proudly. So to date, as of this afternoon, we've had 654 nominations for our positive referrals. Continuing with some of the new initiatives to help build a positive school culture is our Common Language. And so this year, out of some of the one-on-one meetings that Marcy had, and then also through our strategic planning meeting and our responsive classroom team leader meetings, it was evident that we need to have some sort of common language in our building. So this year, we established voice levels and speed levels. And so the voice levels and speed levels really help to make our language common throughout the building. So instead of hearing, like, slow down or don't run, here and here is school level two, or voice level, voice level two. Furthermore, our responsive classroom team collaborated over the summer to take a look at our first space was our cafeteria. And this was an identified need. Over, through our conversations, we heard that the cafeteria, it can be a rambunctious space. And so what can we do to help support that space? And so one of the outcomes was to figure out how to convey that to our students by showing them, you know, what it looks like, sounds like, feels like, to be kind, respectful, be safe, and be your best in the cafeteria space. So one of our goals moving forward is to really come together and create additional matrices for all the additional spaces, the hallway, you know, auditorium, classrooms, and things like that. And then, so also to back up just one thing, in order to establish this common language, we held grade-wide meetings in the fall. And so that was really helpful for us to bring a grade level together and for us to communicate that message. So it came from us as the leadership team, and so everyone heard the same message. There was that common language and expectation for all the grade levels. And we wanted to continue that with the idea of goal-setting in the new year. So in January, we held similar meetings, and we called them reboot meetings. And it was basically rebooting our stripes, reinforcing school rules and, you know, school-wide expectations and goal-setting for a strong second half of the year. And, you know, we've seen some really positive results by having those times to come together and reinforce those expectations.
So now we're going to share with you a little bit about how we support the social, emotional needs of students, and then also teachers as well. So one of the things that we noticed back in the fall with our ODR data, our Office Disciplinary Referral data, was that our young kiddos, our kindergarten friends, it was hard. October was hard for them. We saw that in the data. The teachers were feeling it. So as a PPS team and admin team, we had to brainstorm. How do we respond? So it's kind of like that, so what, now what? So this is what the data is telling us. Now how do we respond? So one of the things we did, we partnered up and we went into kindergarten classrooms, and we utilized a program called Second Step. And I'm going to stop talking because we have a voiceover from the PPS team that will show you what it looked like in action and talk a little bit about the program. So we'll play that.
Hi, this is Melissa Stasio, school counselor. I'm Jordan Francis, school social worker.
And I'm Kristin Panzerman, school psychologist. And we are the PPS team at Windermere. Each week, the administrators and PPS team come together to analyze data, such as ODRs, to identify trends and discuss ways to support the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all of our students. This fall, we noticed a trend in that our youngest learners in kindergarten needed to develop SCL skills to find success in the classroom. We determined the best use of resources was by having our PPS team push into the classrooms to deliver tier-one lessons designed to teach early-school readiness behaviors. To address the identified needs of our kindergarten friends in a systemic way, the PPS team is utilizing the evidence-based SCL curriculum, Second Step. Our team focused on the skills for learning, which are demonstrated throughout the footage with non-herbal cues for body still, ears listening, eyes watching, and voice five. To promote focus, you will also find our kindergarten friends using their attendance skills. Once skills for learning were mastered, we began to introduce ways to calm down. Using stories and songs, the students practiced "Stop, Pain Your Feeling," and "Calm Down," using bell bells. Teachers selected topics designed to address the skill deficits noted within their classrooms and were present during lessons to reinforce the skills throughout the day. Second Step is taught at both elementary schools and pre-ped. At WBS, the PPS team reinforces the lessons taught in the classroom, targeted social skills, rooms, and individual sessions. When the skills are reinforced and practiced in multiple settings, the language becomes common and part of the fabric and culture of our school, much like the voice levels and speed levels mentioned previously. The skills for learning and calming down are anchored in our tiger stripes. Students who demonstrate safe bodies and boundary rights can be nominated for a tiger jersey. We will continue to meet the needs of our learners through a data-driven lens, providing support at all tier levels.
So again, kudos to the PPS team and a tremendous amount of work and dedication. And we're already starting to plan for what this may look like next year. Already knowing, you know, what this year's data looked like, how can we be proactive and plan for going into next school year? And perhaps expand to other grade levels as well with this tier-one SCL support using Second Step. Another way that we're supporting the SCL needs of our students is to support our teachers. So I know you've heard about Hadi before. She was here in the district, which we were very happy to have her here, speaking to both elementary buildings and sharing her story and sharing strategies. But the biggest thing was she really empowered our teachers and left them feeling super inspired. Our teachers got a lot out of her presentation. And we've been able to carry this through faculty meetings since that point. So you see here some work that teachers are doing. It's essentially like a professional learning community where every faculty meeting, we're dedicating some time, looking at our ODR data, looking at where are we seeing the most problematic behaviors occurring, and then what strategies from Hadi before might help us to support some of those trends and patterns that we're seeing in our data. So we're really being strategic and targeted, and the strategies that we're thinking around, talking around, and then planning what that might look like in the classroom to help support our students. So it's something that has been tremendously beneficial to teachers. I've gotten a lot out of it. And we're continuing to do that work, like I said, in faculty meetings for the rest of this year.
So as we noted at the beginning of the presentation through a lot of our conversations and super teams that we've planned with and have continued to plan with over the year, you know, focus this year has been strengthening our responsive classroom practices. And one of the things that we reintroduced this year were vertical families. So during one of our summer meetings, our leadership team created a vision statement focused on embracing responsive classroom philosophy. And so the vision really guided the development of our vertical families. And so the vertical families bring together educators throughout the building across all grade levels, departments, services. all grade levels, departments, services, professional, you know, every educator belongs to a vertical family. And so monthly, vertical families come together to just have some time to have those cross-curricular and vertical conversations. The plan is to continue to provide this targeted PD that supports our responsive classroom practices and ensure that they're consistent and, you know, that we apply throughout the year. And so throughout this collaborative effort, we've got veteran teachers, new teachers alike who are able to share insights and learn from each other. And it's been a great, great thing to have within our monthly meeting structure. So in addition to the vertical families, our teachers have been participating in activities like Better the Ball that we see over on the right here. And, you know, this is inspired by Heidi LaFleur's message, which encourages us to reflect in our practices and to explore ways to better support our students.
So in addition to the responsive classroom enhancements, we are also looking on the instructional side. So an area of focus that we've identified this year is our Tier Three interventions, reading interventions. So we are fortunate to have partnered with Dr. Lisa Kielnowski out of Niagara University and myself, Nicole, Dr. Shanahan, Amy Steger, Katie Merzaki from Smallwood, we're all working together with Dr. Kielnowski to really examine what Tier Three looks like in the elementary buildings, what are the data decision rules that we're utilizing to put kids into a Tier Three intervention, vetting some research evidence-based interventions out there, which ones will match our need, bringing them into the buildings, and then, you know, shoring up our progress monitoring, how are we making decisions based on the data? So we're in the middle of that work. It's exciting work. We're looking at where we've been, where we want to go, and, you know, planning out the next step. So again, very excited for this work, excited to see how this work progresses. And next year at our update, I hope to have some more information to share with you in terms of how we've progressed with this work with Dr. Kielnowski.
So to wrap things up, we wanted to share some new community events. We already know that we have many well-established events like the multicultural fair. But we thought it was really important to have some new events to help get some community involvement and get our families, you know, involved. And so one of those was Poscoals with the Principals. We hosted early at the beginning of the year, I'd say not early, but later August, and we invited all families to come to the school and enjoy Poscoal with us on the front lawn. We had several teachers join us and this was a great way to have some conversations with our parents, have the kids get to know us as a new leadership team, but also have conversations with the parents. So just have an informal method to communicate with each other and get to know each other.
It was at nine AM and the bees were out.
It was still a very, it was still a popular event around, we even know it was Saturday. And then we also have another exciting new event or initiative this year. It's called One School, One Book. And so our One School, One Book, basically we have a one book that the entire community is reading. So every child at Windermere received a copy of Winter According to Humphrey. And the idea is that with every child receiving the book, they can bring it home, read with families, get connected, share this literacy, you know, we have a Fisher literacy experience. And we have subcommittees coming together to help plan. This has been, you know, a very monthly, several months of planning in order to really kick off and get this program off the ground. But we are underway right now with our, the book readings started last week. And so this week, we're reading the short chapters and we look forward to wrapping this event up with a culminating event on April tenth, which we invite you all to attend. This has been a really exciting opportunity. We've got guest readers who read chapters of the story. So even if families can't, you know, read the story with our students, students can access the chapters and listen to guest readers as they read it on YouTube. It's been an all-hands-on-deck, really exciting initiative that we kicked off. And we also have a school pet, Humphrey. Humphrey is in our school library. We have a picture of him right in the middle there. So it's been a super exciting event that we brought to Windermere this year.
All right, and just to wrap up, looking ahead, we are going to continue to enhance our instructional practices, focus on SCL growth for both teachers and students, strengthen our community and student engagement, and then continue to work on planning for targeted and purposeful professional development aligned to our goals. So that's our presentation. What questions do you have?
I have several. First, I just want to say the lead, the, that opens up here, you're welcome here. It's like, what a great book for you guys. This is like, somebody make a drawing of multicultural fair. It's exactly, that's exactly what it was like. You know, so I think that was terrific. I had some, and some of them are just like, just sort of quick things, like what's vertical about, we talked vertically. I mean, I don't, I don't know what that means, that term, vertical.
So it's, um...
I mean, I know what vertical means.
Yeah. So for the responsive classroom teams, the vertical families are made up of representatives of K through five, pre-K through five, special areas, yes, in departments, yes. So we have AIS, our intermissionist department of families, special areas, related service providers, yes, it's a nice cross-section.
And then another term for me, it's like, I know I taught for thirty years, but responsive, what makes a classroom responsive?
So responsive classroom is, it's an approach, right? It's a management approach. And if we go back to that slide, it really ties into four key areas. It talks about engaging academics. So what are, how do we make academics engaging and accessible to all students? Positive community, what does that look like and sound like? There's language within responsive classroom called redirecting, reminding, and reinforcing language. So what do those, what is that? And how does that look and sound? For example, if a student comes to me and wants to show off work that they did, and responsive classroom would suggest that, you know, I'm proud of you, but how do you feel? How does that make you feel? So really trying to empower students to recognize that the pride that they have, and then that would continue. So it really helps to shape that mindset and really focusing in on teacher language to shape behavior in a positive way. And then developmental awareness. So what is developmentally appropriate? And what does that look like in a kindergarten classroom versus a fifth grade classroom is completely different?
Okay. When you were showing me the kind of data on the makeup, the diversity, which I agree is like a strength, I was just, where did the Middle Eastern students fall in that? And the enrollment? I know like, I know that even in the US Census, Middle East, there wasn't a, there wasn't a line for Middle Eastern until I think the last census, or before, they would have to say they were white. And I just don't want those students to go unrecognized. So where would they be?
So this is from the school report card. So I don't want to misspeak, you know, somebody here knows, but I think it's under white.
It is under white and it's something, it's hard for us to, and it's also self-reported, which actually comes into play a lot. People, you know, the way they self-report comes into play. That's currently the way the system is set up.
But I mean, if that's the way, the categories I have to choose from, and I'm from, you know, I'm from Saudi Arabia or I'm from Iraq, what do I put down there? You know, it's like a white, I guess. But I mean, but it's because I don't see anything else that looks appropriate for me.
Hundred percent.
You know, but...
Hundred percent. But that's a state ed category that they've received feedback on. It would be up to them to change that.
Okay, but we don't have any internal data about that.
We do, when we meet our families and children and get to know about them, we develop an understanding of where they're from. We can tell by the different languages that are being spoken.
But we don't really have any like data about how that's... I mean, I know my last year of teaching, I think my Middle Eastern students were the largest minority of students in my eleven...
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is a screenshot from data.nicet.gov, those two graphs or graphics.
It was broken out in the ODR data.
For, yes. So for, yeah, so again, that is the teacher, we're filling out the ODR form and that's one of the categories. So we can look at, to see, you know, who are our students, how can we, you know, culturally responsive, is it something that we need to target through CRT training and things like that? So it is something that the teachers do put in if they know. And it's, you know, Aspen, our student management system, would indicate that.
And then my one last kind of question is another request for assistance. So I just felt like in, you know, in my experience, like if I had a problem with a student or I was, or they seemed to be having a problem, like not that I had a problem, but I feel like they seem, it's like I would, well, if they had an IEP, I would go to their special ed teacher who probably had a relationship with them. And I'd go talk, and I'd go down and talk to their counselor, you know, like what's going on, if something happened because they're familiar with the family, they have this ongoing relationship. So does the request for assistance, does it replace that or is it in addition to that? So if I were, if I were in your, a teacher in your building, would I still be doing, going to the special ed teacher? And I can see how there'd be other people involved that might give different perspectives other than the counselor, like there's several people in the meeting. Or is this supposed to take the place of those kinds of...
Teachers support each other all the time. So those collaborative conversations that, hey, help me out with this type of thing. And that's something that we see on a frequent basis. So the request for assistance is really like, we tried all these things and I'm not seeing the outcome that I was hoping to see. I want to document my efforts and then as a collective group, let's brainstorm some other things that we can put in place. So it kind of formalizes all of it, but certainly that's definitely...
It's probably not a first step.
No, no.
Because my first step would be like, oh, is somebody, something going on at home?
And sometimes we initiate it because we'll see the ODRs and mine is our teacher managed. So if we're seeing, we're like, okay, we're seeing a pattern here, so let's connect with the teacher. Do we want to, we have a request for assistance meeting and brainstorming and put a, you know, an action plan in place to support because we're noticing that there is a pattern in the data.
And sometimes I went to the counselor, I said, yeah, so-and-so, they've been missing, every Monday, they come in, they miss school on every Monday. And a lot of times, the counselor wouldn't know that. And especially if I had first period, you know, at the beginning of the day, no other teacher would know that either. I would be the only person to have it with that information. So it'd be all sort of, but it sounds like maybe you have other ways of capturing some of that data, so it's not just restricted to just me, to just that, that individual teacher.
And there's structures too, right? Like they don't have, they don't use guidance counselors like you do in high school. So the support looks different. So they wouldn't, there isn't like, these kids are assigned to this guidance counselor. There isn't that structure implied. So because their structure is somewhat different, they have to support differently.
Sure, sure.
Right? I think that's a piece of it too, like the system's slightly different.
Yeah.
Do teachers come to you? They might be texting us.
That's it, but thanks.
Thank you for your questions, I appreciate it.
Yep.
I just had a question. In a few of the other building presentations, we had a bit of discussion around attendance and absenteeism. Just curious, what you've seen together this year, if, what your approach has been? Are you still tweaking it and just seeing if that's in line with what we're seeing across the other buildings?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. And so attendance is certainly something that we're tracking on a weekly basis, looking at the chronic absenteeism, and we do have a protocol in place. So, you know, we're sending out notifications, we're doing house visits, we are bringing families in. So those are things that we are actively doing. But because it's so new, we're trying to get a, I'm trying to get a handle on, you know, what is, what do the numbers look like? Is our response having the intended impact? And are we seeing any real change? So I'll have that information for you certainly at the next update, but we're actively working on it. It's not something that is just specific to Windermere issue, it's widespread. So really trying to be creative and think, think outside the box about ways in which we can connect with families. There's a lot of programs out there. Attendance Matters is a great website. There's a program called Attendance Hero, so here, every day, ready on time. So there's a lot of different ways that we can look at. We've put a lot of things in place, so we have to be careful with how much is too much and, you know, kind of slow and steady sometimes and make sure that we are all moving at the same pace because it can feel like a lot. But that is certainly a priority and we're working on it and more to come.
I was going to say, it's hard to believe your first day on the job at Windermere was the third week of July after reviewing that presentation. So I thank you for hitting the ground running and for your tremendous leadership as a team in the building. I'm also thankful for the support being provided by our PPS folks and for being here tonight. I think, you know, my experience as a building leader in principle was that the PPS staff were like an extension of the main office. You know, we were really a close team and I could see that happening and developing at Windermere and it's really nice to see. So keep up the great work and thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the next topic on Superintendent Support. Pleased to welcome Mrs. Vazinsky here to present you with a balanced budget, which is somewhat of a unique opportunity, I guess, for lack of a better term, at this point in budget development. And then once again, you know, I think it's in part due to the approach that the governor and legislators have taken relative to the executive budget proposal. We feel very comfortable that our revenue picture is somewhat clear at this point, where in past years, we had no clue what our revenue picture might look like at this point in the state's budget development. So we're happy to present you with a balanced budget for next school year, but we'll also continue to monitor the state's budget development for our next steps. So welcome.
Thank you. So we will continue with the same format that we have been using, so it should be familiar. All of the text that's in blue is changed from our last presentation, so that's what we'll focus on today. But we are looking at both revenues and expenditures, just a little bit on revenue side, but want to make sure that we are accurately capturing the changes that we've made since our last presentation. And then the expenditures assumptions and projections are the result of the work that all the administrative team has done together. There have been a lot of meetings with every administrator, every department head, building head. We all met to, multiple times, to review not only requests that they may have for next year, but also what their programs are for this year and how we can make sure that we're continuing the support for those programs so that we're, have what they need, but then also have the ability to grow. So we did submit our property tax levy, our cap. It is 2.33%, which is about $939,000 increase. It is cap compliant. And then it's submitted. We still have the ability to adjust it if we need it, but I don't know that we will have a need to make any modifications. And then after the budget is adopted by our voters, we'll go back in and then we'll certify it that what we submitted now is what was actually levied through the voter authorization in May. Our, we didn't change our state aid number, so we are using the January state aid runs, but we will continue to see what the legislative budget looks like when it comes out sometime, hopefully near the due date of April first. We made some changes to our miscellaneous revenues, which show a 3.3% increase or about $280,000, which is a combination of some increases and some decreases. We increased our health insurance rebates, which if you remember, we get the rebates, we bring them in on the revenue side and then we have expenditures in our health insurance budget on the other side of our budget. We increased our service fees, which include tuition for some students that may be coming in for special needs, student fees for AP exams or SATs. That specific line also has an equal expenditure on the other side. Erie County sales tax, we increased to a total of a $150,000 increase this year. And that's because the payments that we're receiving so far this year are still climbing above our projected budget. So we wanted to reject next year as close to actual as possible without imploding it so high that we may face a budget shortage next year. We didn't make any change to our interest earnings from our last presentation. And then we adjusted our Medicaid reimbursements and our miscellaneous revenues downward slightly, again, to be more accurate where we project to be this year. And then we didn't make any changes to transfers, so we're still maintaining $80,000 appropriated from our reserves as well as $1 million in fund balance, which offsets part of our contingency line on the expenditure side of the budget. Overall, we have a 3.66% increase in revenues for a total revenue budget of $81.6 million. In future years, we continue to see modest increases in our revenue budget, but we did not anticipate or build in any state aid increases because that fluctuates so drastically from year to year. We wanted to be more conservative in what our outlook is going to be if our state aid were to stay flat. So our cap, our tax cap is pretty consistent, staying in the twos over the next couple of years, which is a goal because it's better for our budget and it's better for our community when they can... When they can have modest and consistent increases for end planning for their taxes for future years. Um, staffing changes and program changes, these are a direct result of either retirement letters that we've received, that we have already received. Or requests for additions from some of our um, administrators. So we have nine teacher retirements this year, those are all letters that are submitted and all of those positions will be replaced. Um, those are all teachers that are retiring at the end of this school year. And then we have two support staff retirements from this school year. Um, they're actually already retired, but they were in our budget this year, so next year we're able to show that breakage for them. Um, one was in the high school and one was at Windermere. And again, all those positions are also replaced. Um, we have a reduction, which is one teacher at Windermere. Um, it's not a cut or layoff. Um, that person, what, that position was already filled with a long-term sub. So um, we felt that we could adequately and appropriately service our students without that position. So it was, it is a reduction. And then we had one special, one-on-one special aid, special ed aid, that is a change in program for a student. So the student no longer needed it, but again, it won't be a layoff because we have vacancies um, that will be able to just reduce the attrition. And then we have two added, two added positions for next year's budget. One is a grade three teacher at Smallwood and one is an added social worker, P P S staff at Windermere. Um, at Smallwood, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we reduced three teachers as the enrollment had dropped after COVID. And the numbers at Smallwood are right back up to where they were. So we are just year by year replenishing those teachers and putting those classes back to where they were. So Smallwood will be back to where it was prior to COVID. And then the additional social worker at Windermere will continue to support the great work that they're already doing.
Can we go back one?
Yes.
Um, I know we, the board previously accepted the resignations for the purpose of retirement. And I don't see the one from Smallwood up there, but I'm not sure if it's built into the other one, uh, one of the other buildings by mistake or.
Oh, maybe. We did have nine total, so maybe I had the breakdown of them wrong.
Yeah, it could be.
I'll definitely double check that and make sure I correct it if I can on the website.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So all of those are captured in our expenditure changes. So for personnel, we have a two point three six percent increase or about eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in salary. Which are all contractual applications. Um, our benefits change based on those salaries and based on changes in contribution rates. So the E R S rate is going from fifteen point two to sixteen point five percent. The T R S rate is ten point eleven percent, is going down to nine point five nine. Vicomad rate is staying the same, but the dollar amount and cost will increase. Um, we had budgeted an increase in our health insurance of about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, workers' comp premium, our workers' comp program is doing very well. We're part of um, a consortium through B O Cs where we are self-funding our workers' comp premiums. So we will see a reduction of about seventy-seven thousand in our premiums, which is great. And then we have a small reduction in our four three rematch contributions. And that's just based on um, actual expenditures in the last couple of years. In general support, we have an increase of about five point three percent or a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So this is kind of like our general operating expenses. Um, our liability insurance is increasing, so we added about thirty-five thousand there. Utilities were doing very well, we were expecting a decrease. And then we got updated budget recommendations from our consultant. So we did add eighty thousand dollars to cover gas, electric, water and um, our recycling and garbage pickup. Um, for curriculum, we increased the contract service line in the curriculum budget about forty thousand dollars. But that was an inter-budget transfer, so it was funds that Dr. Shanahan transferred from another area of her budget. Facilities, we added ten thousand dollars. And H R had a decrease of about eight thousand dollars, which was um, a service that we had budgeted for in the past. That turned out to not be needed, we were able to meet those needs in other ways, so we're able to take that reduction back. Um, on the instruction side, in that budget, we see a five percent increase again there, which is about three hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, this covers our security and our S R O, special education services, which we had shared in our December budget or rollover budget. But we did increase our S A Ts, S A T fees. Um, that's just enhancement that the high school has because they're making more of those tests available for students here. So they don't have to take them in other locations. Um, we had some smaller material and supply increases for our buildings and that's for all four buildings of about thirty-seven thousand. And then we had software increases of about forty-eight thousand and that is not only instructional software, but also technology software. Our B O Cs budget is projected to increase just over twelve percent or about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, the majority of this are special education placements. So we're not um, seeing crazy increases in what we're purchasing from them. But we had some additional student needs, um, not only in placements, but also in the services that our children are receiving in those placements. So that contributed to a lot of that cost. Um, our C T E enrollment at the high school, our bill for next year is based on our current year enrollment. So we had more kids go this year, which is um, a great opportunity for them, so there was an increase there. Um, seventeen thousand in capital increases. Um, and so then some miscellaneous changes across the board as current, current programs that were buying the costs go up every year. Um, B O Cs did reduce two alt ed programs that we did participate in. One um, was called Edge Academy and the other was Twi, or not Edge Academy, um, short-term suspension and Twilight. Twilight was the other program, so we pulled that money back out of there. And the high school and middle school are going to be working to um, manage any students that may have needed those programs. Either in different programs or in in-house programs. That they are working together to, um, so that can support those kids. Um, our transportation budget is a just under nine percent increase or about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So we are still in our contract extension, where it will be year two of three years. But then we also added about twenty-five thousand dollars just in those lines, in the athletic lines. Due to our capital project, we'll be losing our grass fields in between Kings and Westmoreland. So Mr. Adams is working with our coaches for both the fall and spring seasons to plan for that. And relocate some events, some contests, some practices. We wanted to make sure if they were going to be off-site, that we had the budget to support transporting them there. So overall, three point six six percent increase in spending, which is just under two point nine million dollars. For a balanced budget of eighty-one thousand, eighty-one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, again, we project out for future years. We don't expect necessarily those, those future years to be that high because those don't include any retirements, any attrition. It's just if everyone that's here now, if all the expenses now, if they continue to increase, what would that look like? So with that, we can take a look at our overall revenue and expenditure and compare them this year, which shows a balanced budget. As well as into the next two years. But again, on the revenue side, it's, it may be low because we're not projecting any state aid increases. And on the expenditure side, it may be high because we're not counting for any retirements, breakage, resignations and replacements. So overall, we have a three point six percent increase in revenues or about two point nine million. Covered through various um, categories that we talked about. And expenditures are the same, two point nine million, three point six percent. Um, we have different categories that the expenses are going into, they're summarized here. Which gives us a balanced budget. We are still appropriating a million dollars of unbalanced, eighty thousand in reserves. And we will continue to watch. So our next steps are to see what the legislative budget looks like. If it's significantly different, we may need to come back and take a look and make some adjustments. Um, otherwise, we will look for the board to adopt a balanced budget on the date of April twenty-second at the board meeting. And then we'll have our public hearing on May sixth. Does anybody have any questions?
So I know like both Assembly and Senate were asking for increases above the governors. So if, if that, if state aid did increase, I mean, what would that, would that mean? We would just reduce, um, what, asking for somewhere else or would you, would increase?
It would depend on how much our state aid changed.
Yeah.
Um, if it was a small amount, a few thousand dollars, I think we would probably just leave it alone if it was a significant amount. My recommendation um, to superintendent and to the board would be to increase our health insurance expenditure line. Um, we are budgeted less than what our consultants are recommending we be at, which isn't uncommon. Um, but we kind of roll the dice and we want to control our premium increases for our members as well. Again, we want smaller and steady increases, so we don't have peaks and valleys from Windermere. But that would be one area of the budget in particular that, you know, we would look to possibly make an increase to if we get the ability.
Okay, why is the, the one, I thought they were both E R S and T R S, they're, they're not calculated the same, the same way? They're not on three or five-year rolling averages of, of like the, the market or something? I forget what, because I saw that one went up and the other went down.
Yes.
They're different funds.
They are different funds. And it's, they have different starting balances and different payout amounts and different contribution amounts.
But conceptually, um, he's right, they are calculated on a snapshot of market performance, but not the market, their, their fund performance. Um, as, as Mr. Veeble had said, so, you know, it's, it's just a number that's given to us unfortunately. You know, we're told here's, and it's statewide for all school districts.
I was just curious because it seemed like, you know, if one go up, the other one go up, if, you know, one went down, the other one down, but.
And because that can be a volatile number and can have a significant impact on our budget. Um, we do have reserves for both of them. So in a year where one is jumping several percentage points, that might be a year that we appropriate some of our T R S or E R S reserve. To help smooth that peak, so that we don't have such an impact on our budget.
Sure. Could you go back to the expenditure chart? Um, I know I'm putting it on the spot and it's okay to say you don't know. But do you know in here what we have budgeted for healthcare and what our healthcare consultants recommended?
They were recommending a nine percent increase and we were below that, I want to say by like four hundred thousand dollars.
I know you heard of that.
It's about that because we're at four point nine percent.
Yeah.
So I need to answer your question, that's, that would be where we would, if we saw additional revenue. Knowing that our expenditure budget's pretty well established, that we would want to put that um, revenue. Or if for some reason we saw a decrease, which I hope isn't the case, and based on the information you've cited and what I'm seeing, I don't see that happening. But, you know, if we saw a decrease, then we would have to go and reduce our expenditure side of the budget. But in what I think is maybe an anomaly for this year, I feel pretty comfortable with this budget at this time of year. And I don't necessarily think we'll have the need for an update in April before we have it on the agenda for you to, to adopt. But we will be monitoring the state's budget and, you know, we'll, we'll make that call once we see where those numbers land. But so far, it looks pretty good from a state level.
So let's just say we had an increase, uh, of, you know, million dollars, would we look at the, would we look at the tax rate?
I think that would.
Or would we put it into um, reserve for some capital?
Yeah, I think an increase above, that's why I asked Mrs. Wazinski where we were in healthcare compared to what the consultants recommended. Any increase above what would bring us up to that recommended amount? We would probably come back to the table here and have that discussion with, uh, you know, an additional recommendation of either looking at the tax levy or some other um, avenue.
I had a couple of questions as well. The, for expenditure assumptions, the personnel increase of, of contractual applications, um, does that take into account the breakage? So like, are we really looking at like a one point five million dollar increase for personnel expenses?
It does take into account the breakage.
Okay.
So before, like in our previous budget, it was like one point three million.
Okay.
So we rolled everybody over, so now this was able to be reduced because the breakage is in there.
Okay. And then for sales tax revenue, or I mean, or, or where are, there's, you know, the tariffs are decreasing, they're cross-border. You know, people aren't coming and spending here anymore, so should we really be increasing that for next year?
Well, for this year, we, our budget was four point six-ish and we're looking to be about four point eight-five. So next year it's a four seven, so it's still a little lower than where I think we're going to land this year. But I didn't want to artificially keep it low and then have a gap still or be looking to appropriate more fund balance or make cuts. That revenue is going to come.
Obviously, you know, you don't have a magic eight ball, so.
Yes. So it's very similar to the interest earnings. You can push it up and push it up, but then, once it's in there, I mean, this is, needs to carry us through eighteen months. Because it's not till June of twenty-sixth.
Right.
That this budget will be done. So we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where, yeah, this year we're bringing in five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in interest earnings. So next year we're going to budget for that, then we only bring in four hundred thousand because the rates drop and now we have a gap. And a mid-year gap is very difficult to overcome if you don't have areas that you cannot spend. So we try to have eighty percent of our budget encumbered by the start of school, at least by October.
I mean, I appreciate the question because I think what it made me think about and, and something you and I can talk about as well. Is those areas of volatility or uncertainty, like healthcare, I think that's another one that I put in that same category. Where if there was an increase in state aid when the state finalizes their budget, that would be another area to target. You know, healthcare as well as sales tax. You know, so the, yeah, interest earnings, you know, those, those areas that are really looking eighteen months out into the future. That are uncertain would be the areas we would want to target with any additional state aid that we would see. So I, that's a great question.
Thanks.
We do monitor them, we run three-year averages, we look at current year, what we budgeted per quarter, what we really brought into the quarter.
I had a question about the B O Cs expenditure line. So is there an offsetting revenue that we get, you know, for the, the increase, the twelve point four five for this year? Is that offset at all, like do we get anything in?
It's part of our state aid, is B O Cs aid. So we do bring that in. Um, special education costs have a different aid structure, so it's not specifically B O Cs aid, it becomes excess cost aid. And a lot of the expense increase for B O Cs was special education related. So we could see an increase in excess cost aid next year, but we don't.
That's what I was wondering, because it seems so, it drops off and it levels down to two percent for the next two projected budgets. And I'm just curious if that's something that we maybe.
Two percent is normally what we expect our B O Cs programs to increase every year. Like if an O T session is four hundred and seventy dollars for a group session, next year it's going to be four ninety or five hundred. Like we expect everything to increase a little bit, which is where the two percent comes into play. Because that aid that we would gain from the expense, which is B O Cs as an expense based aid, um, comes in on the revenue side.
Okay, the following year.
Yeah, the following year.
Yeah.
So we front the money in one year and then we get the increase in aid the following year.
Do we have a percentage that we get back, like we do with the others?
Our overall B O Cs aid is roughly sixty-five percent, but different categories have different rates. And then the special education rate is completely a different formula and different. And then the special education rate is completely a different formula and different calculation based on individual students. Um, but on average, for our non-special ed costs, we get about sixty-five percent back.
Um, the, the charter tuition reduction of a hundred and eighty-three K, but how many, is that about like just fifteen students? What is it, like twelve thousand or thirteen thousand?
It's roughly twelve thousand per student with an additional ten to fifteen thousand, depending on any special education services they may be receiving at the charter school.
Oh, so you just, so you can base that, cause you already know, there've been, they've had to notify us that about any, and charter school two, uh, enrollments?
They're not required to notify us ahead of time and students move in and out all year long, all year long, those kids are changing. So we actually pay by the FTE up to three decimals, so this number of school days that they attend divided by the possible days. Um, we base that estimate on our current students that are there, like now, that we anticipate staying. The seniors that we know are leaving, as well as assuming three, four kindergarteners may enroll. So we kind of roll it that way.
Okay, great.
And your, I mean, your office has done a great job, um, tracking that in a more sophisticated manner, uh, because it is so expensive. Um, and we did, and I think, uh, we did find, there was a number of students that weren't residents in our district that were telling charter school they were attending that their home school attendance was in Hearst, so the school was billing us. But, um, thanks to the, um, tracking that is going on in Mrs. Wazinski's office, as well as other offices, um, we were able to save some money in that regard too.
Yes.
Yeah. Very high level of detail, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, one more presentation, I do apologize, I might be developing a scripty throw. The... So as you are aware, um, back in September, the governor, um, passed legislation that requires all school districts to add a student board member to the Board of Education, officially called a Student Ex officio Board Member. Um, so we are required to have that fully in place by July one of twenty twenty-five. So we were waiting up to this point for some guidance from our policy services at Erie One BOSI's, as well as NISBA has been providing some support as well. We feel like at this point, we're ready to move forward and start identifying the student. Um, I have a little bit of background information, and then the main thing that I want the board to weigh in on tonight is how you would like these student identified that will be joining us here in July. So under the new law, the student board member will be attending all public meetings, um, they won't be participating in our executive sessions. Um, and they will participate in other board activities as the board determines appropriate. So could be board retreats or other activities that the board is involved in. Uh, but specifically, they'll be at the public meetings, um, and they won't be allowed to vote on your consent agenda. Um, they won't count towards establishing a forum, you know, having a majority of the board. Again, they won't attend executive sessions and they will attend any meeting or hearing that's not open to the public. So selecting the Student Ex officio Board Member is one of the big tasks that we want to talk about tonight. Um, at this point, they'll serve a one-year term, starting July one, ending June thirty of twenty-six. Um, the guidelines, the criteria are pretty broad. You know, they have to have attended Amherst Central High School for at least one year prior to selection. So no freshmen, no transfers, but for the most part, our sophomores, juniors, and seniors are eligible to participate if they're interested. The law, um, outlines six possible ways for the Student Ex officio Board Member to be identified. They are listed here, everything from being elected as a student president of the high school. So in our high school, we have class officers and we have a student council officers. So that would be our student council president, could serve as the ex officio board member. Um, it could be a student elected by the student body, it could be a student selected by the high school student government or the student council, um, a student selected by the high school council, a student selected by the superintendent, or a student selected by the school board. So those are our options. Um, obviously, uh, my goal would be to walk away from tonight with the board's preference of one of those six options, so that we can get working on the logistics of how one of those six options will play out. And we can have that, um, put into motion, so we would have our student identified for July eighth, our reorganization meeting. Um, so as far as next steps go, um, the, we do have draft policy from Erie One BOSI Policy Services. For those of you that have seen BOSI's policies before, it won't surprise you to see that it pretty much is a regurgitation of the legislation. Um, and it's intentionally broad, um, so that's why our conversation tonight about selection of the student is the most important piece. But the policy committee will review that in April and will have it for you to officially adopt. But in the meantime, once we know how you'd like to identify the student that'll serve on the board, we'll be able to get moving with that. Um, and then, we are also working with one of our high school students who is, um, using this as one of his projects for the civics class and his seal of civics readiness, and he's working very closely with Mrs. Wazinski, Mrs. Custody. I have too many work wise. I work very closely with Ms. Custody and myself. And one of the main projects, and I think that will be something that's a nice legacy for him to leave behind, will be working on a manual for the Student Ex officio Board Member, um, that will be used for onboarding them when they come on. And as you see, with a one-year term, that's going to be an annual process where, you know, every spring, we'll be identifying a new student board member and having to kind of go over, um, you know, their roles, responsibilities, and in relation to service on the board. Um, so that's where the next steps are, I'll go back to our six options that we have. And I guess I'll open it up for discussion with the board if.
Just prior to our discussion, I was wondering, Mr. Pennella, do you have any of those options that you would like to recommend to the board for us to discuss, or?
Well, I have given it a significant amount of thought, um, because someone made me, but, no, because it's very important. Um, and I, one of the things that stood out to me here is of the six options, four of them are a selection. Um, which to me, you know, going into this for the first time, you know, students were allowed to be on school boards prior to this. We obviously didn't have one, so this is a new, um, opportunity for us. And I do think, as we go into at least year one, I would prefer to pick one of the four options where the student is selected with the caveat that we have a process that makes it available to all eligible students. Um, you know, so we're not excluding anybody. You know, there should be, or, and that's where I was kind of referencing earlier, um, if, if, if the option of, you know, the superintendent of school is selecting the student, I wouldn't just wanna walk through the hallways and handpick one student. You know, I would wanna put something out to all of the students to have, you know, an application process, you know, uh, that they could fill out. We could review, we could sit down and interview, um, and make sure we're selecting someone who's committed to the work that we're doing here and, and able to attend. You know, it is a big commitment, as you all know, um, two evenings a month. So my preference would be one of the four options of selection, and I would lean towards, you know, high school principal, superintendent, or school board. And as we go into this for the first time, I would be happy to lead that process, um, if, if you would, if it's your preference that I select the student, um, just to make sure we're getting off in this new adventure on the right foot.
I just so happen to live with a student in the civics class, and, uh, they did have a class discussion about this process led by the, the gentleman who's doing his, his seal of civic readiness on it. And they were, as a group, coming to consensus, and you probably know this as well, hopefully I'm speaking correctly, that they wanted it to be a, 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 um, school-wide election process that would include a similar type of, you know, application and vetting, you know, but then to have the student body elect, uh, the representative.
Like an option three?
It would, it would be selected by the student body, but, you know, there would be a process involved in it, you know, that you'd have to apply. And does that, does that sound right?
Yes, and, but they did also, I happened to be in the class, I went and, and watched, and, um, but they did talk about some issues that could arise from that. Uh, one of it being, you know, are you popular or not?
Yeah, they wanted it to not be a popularity contest.
And how do you, how do you select the committee to go through, uh, who, who is the committee? From the stu-, uh, students?
To review the applications.
And this, and well, and the student who's working on it did meet, following his presentation, cause I couldn't attend, cause I was in another meeting. Um, so I did meet with him a couple of days after, and he was, he was, he was well aware that it would be your decision, you know, as a school board. And he said, you know, but in my presentation, and I said, I looked at his presentation, it was great, he said, I did offer my opinion about it, you know? And I said, pardon?
Which was what?
Which was a democratic process of student being elected by the student body. Um, but again, with some sort of process leading up to being put on the ballot. Um, you know, and I, and we had a very nice conversation, he's very, um, bright and articulate a young man. And I, and I said, well, if the board were to be interested in that, you know, I would recommend that we maybe then go with this one, so that you have, and we would have to probably make sure that they understand now, as being student council president, this is a new responsibility that is going to be added to that role, um, and responsibility. Just, I may be in the interest of the number of elections that are able to be able to take place, or given the timing that we have right now, you know, being almost April and this being, needing to be put into place by July one.
Who, who, who's, who are members of the student government?
Um, currently, like the, the nuts?
It's the, like, it's relative, but that's the popularity contest.
Yeah, as president, vice president, I mean, you will, you'll recall, they sit next to me on stage at graduation. They typically have speaking roles as the elected representatives.
Are they the class, but, no, they're the student council presidents.
Yeah, so that's like the entire school, so each grade level has, you know, president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, and then.
There's a student council.
Then there's a student council that is the entire school, student body, student government.
But, but I guess that's my point, so is it like numbers of all four of the grades, is it just, um?
It tends to be like juniors and seniors that land in those roles.
But, so it's a vice president, president, or secretary, treasurer?
Yeah. Yeah, typically, you're upperclassmen, most of the time, seniors.
And maybe, you know, like you said, with this year being where we're at, April, maybe it is, you know, this year is a superintendent choice and, and then there's a time to develop a good process.
Just to see how the role looks once they get in, in here and, and know how to add those responsibilities to, I mean, if we were to assign that to the president of the high school or somebody on the student council, I think we would definitely need to see what it looks like for a full year.
I mean, I think we have to.
For me, it should be one of the first three options, because it comes from the students, their selection comes from the students rather than from the principal, the superintendent, and least of us, like the board. I think, um, I would say not the president, because you might have different reasons. You see, when you said, it's like, well, I, I wasn't, I don't mind being the president doing this, but I don't wanna do these other things. And so it might not be the person we wanted, so I would, I would rule out number one. I think, uh, you know, any election is gonna be a popularity contest, in some regard, although I have to say that the, the students who are officers that give those, those speeches, and my own experience, like the stu-, those are usually pretty dedicated students, you know? You know, really high-functioning students, and I, personally, I, I remember when I went through these, when they, when they came out and I thought about them, I gravitated towards the third one, because I thought that the, uh, the, the student council, the high school, this government, maybe someone in that group would be like, this is something I would really like to do. Or they knew somebody, or, or they could ask, and they could ask students, and they could select somebody who was like, uh, not in student government, but who could really do a good job, and I guess, um, so I guess, for me, I would, one of those first three, and I would lean towards the third one, but that's, that's my.
So how many people make up the student government that would be the choice?
The, the student government, would that include all class officers, or is it just the student council officers?
Yeah, I think it would be, I did talk to Mr. Pidgen about that particular, these couple of options here that include this one. And when I asked him, I said, well, what would that be, you have multiple presidents? He said, it would be the student council president. And a student selected by the high school government, um, I'm gonna put him on the spot, cause I know he's behind me and he used to work at the high school, Scott Duke.
Oh, you're asking.
Yeah. Oh, no, he's in the hallway.
What's your, what's your question, Mr. Pennella?
No, how many students, the question is, how many students are on the student government? I believe it's four, but I'm not entirely sure.
President, vice president.
I think it's like five, there's like a student.
Oh, good. Hey, hey, sorry to, the, uh, the.
Inpatient.
The student council, how many students are elected to the student council?
Student government, yeah.
Four.
Four.
Four?
What's your opinion on this?
Oh, we put me on the spot.
Well. We, we have talked.
We're selective. You asked.
And that's why this is a board meeting held in public and, uh, back and forth. No, but I think, um, you know, again, here's what I've noticed about our kids, that I really appreciate about them. And you'll see it when we bring our pathfinders in to try to honor our students and teachers of the month. Many times, they're not able to be here, uh, because our students who are the type of students who would be serving on this are very, very busy in the evenings. So we wanna make sure we're picking a student that, you know, is interested and able and willing to show up. I mean, they are involved in sports and music and things in the community and, you know, in the region. So my concern is wanting to be successful with our first step into this, and then knowing that, you know, again, we're talking about a one-year term, so that we don't have to be locked into this forever.
But the students would have a really good handle on that. I mean, they could make the, let's say it was selected by the student council. They would say, you know, it's like, we, you need to be able, like, we already have a calendar set for next year. So it's like, will you be able to make these commitments? That's kind of one of the requirements, that you could, you know, be able to come to the meetings. And if it's something, and it's like, that would be, you know, that could just be baked into the, so, um.
I don't think we have the board calendar set until July.
Too long.
Yeah, so whomever's committing to this position won't, will be the one they're committing to.
I have a, a, I guess.
A draft form.
Oh, a draft form, I saw that.
Yeah, then at least we're supposed to have read that.
Yeah.
So I feel like for.
That's the school calendar, the board's.
Yes. Um, I would be comfortable, like, maybe because of the short timeframe this year, if we wanted to do one of the selection options, that's uncomfortable with that. Um, I have to say, I was inclined to include the student body when I first read through all of this. Um, can we do a blend? Could, for instance, this is maybe just a strange idea, but if the student body nominated three, um, three students, or the high school government nominated three, and those three nominees get brought to you, or get brought to the principal or us, and kind of do a combination where everyone's kind of part of this selection committee?
Is that an option?
It doesn't say it's not, I just didn't know if we could kind of make it collaborative. And again, not for this year, cause I think it's too complicated, but for next year's.
Yeah, I mean, I think any of those options need to have a process, which is why I'm hoping to walk away with a decision, so we can develop what that process looks like. And whether it's a nomination process, or whether it's an application process is kind of what I had in mind. You know, and then a review of the application, and then a selection, if we go with one of the four selection options. Obviously, if it's a student elected by the student body, then they would have to, um, express, I mean, I don't know how somebody gets on the ballot for an election, but I'm assuming they, you know, are, they're not.
There's an, uh, application, or a nomination, not nomination, uh, just a candidacy format.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they declare their candidacy, as opposed to being nominated. I would, I mean, I'd be cautious, uh, with a nomination process, cause I wouldn't want someone to be nominated who's really not interested by.
I think, I have more of an application, nomination is probably a great term.
Yeah, so I would be more towards application.
Yeah.
I'm leaning towards application too.
I'm leaning towards application too. I think somebody needs to understand what they're committing themselves to.
Completely, yeah, I agree.
So who would write the first, so I guess the first part of the process is writing what the requirements are and the qualifications for the position?
Yeah, the qualifications are broad, you know, so then we would want sort of an application that we're able to look at and review to see how serious they are about it, or what is the rationale or reason behind why they want to get involved and, you know, some sort of, um, a little bit of a narrative process, uh, application there.
I mean, I guess I, like, I want the students to have a voice, but I can see it's like, okay, so let's say the student council runs that application process and it runs through them and they give, uh...
Three, three options.
Three options, like, here are, here are three candidates. Maybe they won't get three, I don't know. That's another thing, it's like, if you will get, I don't know. I'm having a hard time finding people who wrote for school board too.
That's why I'm trying to keep it simple, at least in year one.
I think it's easier to...
Because my concern is, you know, do we get too much interest? Do we not get enough interest? You know, what, what type of student, um, interest are we going to get is the big unknown and availability.
So the decision then isn't to decide how we're going to do this going forward?
It's just this year.
Yeah, it's something we need to revisit, I think, at least, you know, maybe January of next year as we're into year one. And then, you know, if there's a change in the process, then we'll have enough time to get that put into place.
Does the policy limit somebody to a one-year term?
The law does.
But it's limited to a one-year term, so we couldn't decide somewhere down the road that we want to have, you know, a junior who serves two years and then develops into the senior, and, you know, we have two people.
I mean, I haven't seen anything that's, I, it is a one-year term, but I haven't seen anything that says you can't select the same student two years in a row. That they're limited to one term, but, you know, again, I think that's...
That we only have one person?
Yeah, and it's new. I mean, again, if I go back to the origins of this, it started with a law passed in September and it has to be put into place for July.
I mean, how, how much of a time crunch is it? I mean, here, okay, so it won't take very long to get the qualifications and that, uh, it gets to the student council. I don't know, next week you could have applications, receive applications from April 1st before break, um, before the spring break.
Before summer.
Election by the board is one of the options.
But I don't, I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it taking like, I don't think it's this arduous thing. I think you have the app, you know, as long as you get, getting qualifications and requirements...
Who's developing those qualifications? Who's writing it down? Who's forming the application? Is it the student council?
There's a template, right?
Yeah, there's some recommended...
Yeah, there's some verbiage and stuff.
Yeah, there's some stuff out there available. I think we've looked at other states that have had this in place as well as NISBA has some information, but there's nothing that I think is just kind of taken and implemented.
There are other local school boards who have student members. I'm sure we could get information from them.
Yeah, but the criteria was different, and we do have some of those. Um, I think three districts in one of the meetings I was in of superintendents, and this came up, had mentioned that they already had student board members, and two of the three shared out their information. But I think that you can fill in where my, what I don't know here, but I think they were required to be elected.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, you could sit down with the student council members and have to help them work through that process, that would be a good process for them to know, like, even for those, I mean, it's something you do later. It's like coming up with policy and you don't come up with it out of a vacuum. It's like, well, we have this here, we have these other things, pull something together, and then, and then there's an adult in the room to make sure, like, just to sort of kind of facilitate and guide the process along so they have something that we feel is, like, is worthwhile and see what happens.
Yeah, I like that. My only hesitancy is I don't know the roles and responsibilities of the high school student government as I stand here, because I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations, so I don't know what's on their agenda for the spring.
Well, I mean, I'm sure they have a tactic done, but they have a lot coming up and a lot of these students, as you said, and they're very involved, students who are PPs or starting this, I don't know if this is going to make their agenda as much as you want to say it's going to be an easy task, I don't know if it is. I, I want to give them time to do it thoughtfully and to, I mean, because it's an important position and we have a student who's very interested in helping us to get this done right, I don't want to do it fast.
I mean, so I could certainly get that information and come back. The board wanted more information about what, whether or not the high school student government could be part of the selection. And I don't know what they have planned and what their roles and responsibilities are between now and June.
I mean, I think you've already heard, like, it sounds like from the group of students that were talking about it, like, they would, they, they would like, they would like student control over it. With some, but they're worried about some backstops, which I think having an adult in the room doing that, and then even if they select as three, and then from those, those three, I think those would be the backstops, maybe to, maybe, um, help, you know, those guardrails first, first, maybe to, in case something wouldn't get off, go off the rails there.
Yeah, and to be fair, that was civics class, which is seniors, and they were picking a project that is designed to benefit the community and one student, being aware that this legislation was passed, chose this as a project. Because I wanted him to be the student, I said, you know, you're telling him to be a great candidate.
Would it make sense for just this year, what if the board, we did select the students and we can actually see what does this look like? Who are the people that are even interested in this to get a better handle on that ourselves? And then we can make a more informed decision for the years to come, and that way it's a selection process and we don't have to worry about implementing a huge election.
That's where I'm leaning myself, but, or, I think I would prefer for Tony to be the selection, but I'm more than happy to take that on as a board too. But I think keeping it with us for this first year as we're trying to get it kicked off.
Just to get a handle on it.
Just a handle on what it looks like.
Could it be, I mean, you know, the person will be a board member, so it makes sense for us to have some involvement. I mean, could it be, we have that application process?
I don't know.
And the students are vetted and then, you know, in conjunction with the board and the superintendent, they choose based on the application process?
I don't know if we should have it though, because we don't have any, you know, whoever comes off the board becomes on the board, or someone else to run, that's, that's not going to do it us, right? So to me, if I was gonna, if I was gonna do that, I would say either Tony or Mr. Pitt, or, Mr. Pennella or Mr. Pigeon could be the, you know, and then, you know, and then, look, I thought the first three originally, because I'm looking at them saying, I think that, you know, the kids need to buy in, but it does give you the option to know what kind of interest they really is. If I gauge, well, you know, there's 12 kids, there, you know, apparently got one, and maybe that makes a little bit of a, you know, feeling.
It might vary from year to year too.
It could.
I mean, it could still be an application process.
Oh, it should be an application process.
Can I finish saying? So an application process that gets reviewed and vetted and, you know, the top three, like was said before, as selected by high school leadership or superintendent, then get, uh, then there's an election. The student government, you know, the student body votes on those top three that were already vetted through the application process.
Like a reverse supply and use process.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind the sophisticated approach, but I, I'm also more in, like, let's keep it simple in year one.
I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do an application process and review them and pick one, you could pick the top three and just work together and quick election, of course, it's so easy, right?
Yeah, I mean, I...
I think we need to select one of those six, just one for this year.
Yeah.
I agree, a blend would be ideal. And there's buy-in from everybody involved, but for right now, I think we need to choose one of the six, and I...
So if we have, I mean, we have five people here. So we got, we do have two board members who weren't able to be here. I mean, if you're able to, you know, have a majority agree upon one, we can be off and running.
I'm gonna pull the board.
If not, we can come back to this at another time.
Let's see where we land. I will pull the board. Does anybody have any further discussion before we pull?
So for this year, I will opt for selection by superintendent.
Okay, Mr. Bevelow?
I will opt for either by the high school principal or the superintendent.
Mr. Pratt?
I'll go by, selected by high school superintendent.
I'm good with either the high school principal or the superintendent.
Okay, and I would prefer the superintendent to do the selection.
But it's still to be an application process.
Yeah, that needs to be developed.
With an application process.
I wouldn't want to limit anyone who would be interested, so we want all eligible students to be able to express interest and then see what we get.
But how would, how would, not to blame, but how would, how would we relay to the students that? Well, I, I, I think there ought to be two things. One is, if there's just one person on the board and nothing ever gets back to the students, then I'm not sure what we're doing, what they're doing, if it's making sense, unless they're just doing it for themselves and put it on a college application, which I don't know if that matters. Or, um, but understanding what the position is and what might be expected, that might be another thing. Unfortunately, if you're the person, then who does that then fall on? To relay to interested parties what it is that, you know...
Where does the reporting go?
Expectations...
Like this, you know, this person would probably have to attend student government meetings and have to attend various things to be able to break things forward.
And I think that, I think that it was a good illustration of where we are right now. I don't think we know that yet. You know, the law doesn't dictate that. I see that as something that's going to evolve over time. At this point, that's a great idea that I never thought of. Like, what is the responsibility of the student as far as reporting back to the student body about the work that's being done here?
Reporting into the board from the student body.
Right. Like, we haven't, that hasn't been developed. I think that's part of that whole, um, option that our, our student is working on, or identifying the roles and responsibilities. I see that as something that's going to evolve quite a bit over time as we jump into this, um, you know...
Sorry.
No, that's good.
Can we make sure though, in, in the fact that we're going to do it this way this year, that we notify the entire student body that this will change, this could change, this is likely to change? We don't want to exclude you from the, you know, like, have some sort of marketing effort to, you know, the students that, you know, we want you to be part of this process, but you can't this year because of the timing of things. And, you know, this is going to evolve and this is going to change and, you know, because I wouldn't want to see the students say, oh, yeah, well, you know, this means nothing, we have no involvement, you know.
Well, and we'd like to, whoever is placed on the board with us, we would have that discussion with them to see how we could change the process.
That's actually very good. They'd have, have student involvement, that's actually very good.
Well, you have to crawl before you can run, for sure. I mean, there's a lot of topics that we're covering here. You know, I, I don't want to minimize it, but goal number one is to get this off the ground and be in compliance by July. And then you're bringing up a lot of points of how I see it evolving over time and continuing to grow. I do think we might have, with the, with the selection, because I feel like you kind of landed in there, but I wasn't exactly sure of the numbers. You know, with the selection, I do think you're going to give more, and you may not think this, but hear me out, you're going to give more students an opportunity. You know, because an election is, you know, here's the ballot, here's your three or four choices, and the vote takes place on one day and the results are announced. In, in a selection process, every single child is going to be given, I mean, unless we have like 30 kids. I would say, you know, as long as we have a manageable number, we have the ability to sit down with five, six, seven, eight kids in a, in a day to, in an interview process to see who really is the best candidate for, um, that role. So I think you're going to actually give more students opportunities as opposed to a, a vote, which could come down to, you know, name recognition or popularity or, or whatever it is, like you said. But again, we're talking about year one and we're not locked into anything long-term. So did you have, are we good? Did we have what we needed, or do we need to bring this back to the next board meeting?
No, we did have four members vote for superintendent, um, would agree to a superintendent's election. Two of those members did also say high school principal.
One of those two. So I can work with Mr. Pigeon to, I can work with him on it to see which one of us is best.
I'll just do one anyway, so that sounds wonderful.
So great.
No wonder he called me in.
I appreciate, I appreciate that discussion, and I really appreciate the opportunity we have to add a student voice to the board. And again, you know, I don't think it's going to be perfect come July one, but I think it's going to be a nice evolution and a nice addition of what we have here.
Just that it was decided that you would revisit the student selection process in January of 2026.
Thanks for making that note. Then I will need a motion to convene.
I'll make a motion to convene two executive sessions to discuss employment of a particular person.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh! Forgot.
I'm sorry.